Very good, thank you all. Did you feel why I am reformed tonight and wasn't last Thursday? I'm still quarantining, trying to maintain an environment that we can have my 92-year-old mother over for Thanksgiving dinner next week, or next Thursday. So that's the reason I'm calling involving here. We'll see what happens. I understand Vicki is also remote. You know, close contact, so we'll need to have everything with a world call Christina. With that, we'll head. Christina, call the world.
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Present.
Parliament?
Yep.
Mayor Lombard?
We're one in, one minute into the meeting, we're off the rails already.
Yeah.
The time I entertain motion to approve the agenda is presented. Second. Motion second to approve the agenda is presented. World call Christina.
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Very good. We have three sets of minutes from October 22nd, special meeting, October 29th briefing meeting, November 2nd regular meeting. I've got a motion to approve those three sets.
Hello.
Second. Motion second to approve the minutes from the three meetings listed as presented. Any questions, comments? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Very good, motion carries. Item number five, we have the approval of the bills and claims submitted with the agenda. The amount totaling $1,298,308.83. Motion to approve as presented. Move to approve. Second. Motion second to approve the bills and claims as submitted with the agenda. Any questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion carries, thank you. We have two items under the consent calendar, the approval of plans of track AK, AP, approval of Plan 1A and Block 7. I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Second. Motion second to approve the consent calendar presented. Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion carries, thank you. This time, anyone wishing to address the council for the community or public that you saw this time? I would rely on somebody that's present to inform me of somebody who's in question.
Nobody is stepping up to the mic, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Nope, nobody's stepping up.
Oh, very good. We will move on. We have a public hearing on 2021 liquor license renewals. Looks like there's 18 license renewals there. I would entertain a motion to approve. Second. Motion second to approve the liquor license renewals as presented. Any questions, comments, concerns?
One.
This is Lisa Marson, the Brandon City Attorney.
There you go.
Lisa Marson, the Brandon City Attorney, and I would just note, in terms of violations this last year, we did have one violation that I would report to the council. On September 11th, 2020, Brandon Police Officer Alex Palmer at 2:42 a.m. observed through the window two individuals seated at a bar with glasses containing what he believed was beer, and one person in the bar cleaning the area. This occurred at 212 Bar in Brandon, South Dakota. The door was not opened. He called Metro and he saw individuals empty the drinks that were on the bar. The one individual who was cleaning came to the door, identified himself as an employee. He apologized that two customers were still present and still had drinks at the bar after 2 a.m. Brandon ordinance 249 requires bars to remove patrons after 2 o'clock in the morning and after 2:30 employees are to be gone. South Dakota codified law allows the council to consider this matter relative to renewal determinations of liquor licenses. In November, this information was conveyed to 212 owner. He indicated he would, he was not aware of the situation, he would address the situation with the employee and provide training. Tonight, we have Officer Palmer who noted the violation present if the council has any questions, and we've asked the owner to be present as well if there are any questions. Other than that, we're aware of no violations that have occurred in Brandon relative to liquor licenses this year. Have we had this specific violation before, and if so, what was done about it? This violation, we have not been aware of any similar violation that has been brought to my attention before. So it's not something that the city prosecuted or the state's attorney prosecuted. Instead, it was dealt with through a discussion with the owner, who discussed it with the employees.
So there was no citation issued? Okay.
And we bring it to your attention because the law doesn't require a citation. You are to have all evidence of possible violations, it's for you to consider. So if you have questions of the owner or the officer, you certainly can ask questions now if you want to.
I wouldn't mind hearing from the officer.
Hi, Sergeant Palmer. I was on patrol. It was Friday, September 11th, approximately 2:42 a.m. I do a drive-through of the usual bars, restaurants, make sure everything's gone, everybody's cleaned up, nobody hanging around this evening. That evening, there were a lot of vehicles in the lot. Drive into the lot closer to the building I got, I could hear the, once I parked, there's a little alleyway, parked in the alleyway between the businesses. I could hear the music from inside. Made note through an open blind of the subject still inside the bar. There were the two subjects seated at the bar that had a yellowish-gold color tall glass in front of them. Tried to make contact with them by shining my flashlight in the window. They kind of looked at me and ignored me to begin with. Had to have Metro call inside. They made contact with the employee who eventually came to the door, spoke to the employee. He said there were a couple of his buddies waiting on him to get done cleaned up, cleaning up, so they could get a ride home. The employee was very apologetic. I just advised him of the ordinance and state law that couldn't be serving after 2 a.m. and couldn't be anybody in the bars after 2:30 a.m.
And then what was his response?
Again, he was very apologetic. Stated again that his friends were just waiting on him to get done. Apparently, they had been drinking, was waiting on him to get done working so he could give them a ride home. Advised him that then, you know, they would need to wait outside or somewhere other than inside the establishment.
You have a question?
I guess I would like to maybe hear from the owner as far as how it was addressed.
My name's Kyle. I actually had a full staff meeting with all my employees, letting them know the severity of this consequence and that what are we going to do in this situation. We have a dedicated area outside or in a vehicle if it is winter time for people waiting. There'd be no people allowed in the bar after 2. Any questions?
If it occurs again, what would you do? With the same employee or another employee?
Well, if it's the same employee, they're immediately fired. Hopefully, we don't have this situation at all. I can't control everything that happens. I can try to lead to a better best example. Most of my staff appreciates that, respects me enough to hopefully learn from the situation.
But they got the point.
Yeah. I'm not very nice outside of the walls sometimes, so it wasn't a very good conversation.
Good, good. I mean, it was serious.
It's not a joking matter.
Yeah.
This is my livelihood. It's not something I'm trying to put on the line for anybody else.
Yeah, well, good.
Very good. With that, I call the question, Christina.
Clark?
The question's to...
Approve.
Approve.
All of the...
All.
Yep.
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion passes. Next, we have a request from Wildberry Library for some additional dates at Brandon Farmer's Market for retail wine and cider license. Dates were going to be reported back. I have a motion to approve that. Second. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Motion second to approve the additional base of the Wild, of the Wildberry Library and Brandon Farmer's Market. Any questions, concerns, comments? Very good, Christina.
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion passes. Moving on, we have the golf course. We have a golf course bank stabilization project, request for advertisement for investment administration. Full projected cost of this project is $378,000. The majority of the work being funded by FEMA and/or the state of South Dakota. The approximate cost of the city of Brandon is estimated to be near $37,000. Total budget of $378,000. I ask for a motion to approve the administration to go out and advertise for bids for this project. We've talked about it in the CFP. So I entertain a motion to proceed with advertising bids.
Yes, motion to go out to advertisements for bids, I guess.
Second.
Motion second to authorize the administration to proceed with advertising bids for golf course bank stabilization project as presented. Any questions, comments? Very good, now Christina.
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion carries. We have work reports from the Parks and Rec Department and also all the public safety departments, the police and special department reports for your review. Next, I have D, Administration D1, we have easement requests, two easement requests from Mittel on the west side of Aspen Park on Nichols Avenue, and also an easement request on the north, towards the north side of Plains Gas Station. I entertain a motion to approve these easement requests from Mittel.
Okay.
Second. Motion second to approve the easement request from Mittel as presented in two areas. Any questions?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion carries. Item D2 is an annexation request from the I-90 Plaza, lay-in to Resolution 29-20. A motion to approve that resolution. Motion second to approve Resolution 29-20, adding an annexation request for the I-90 Plaza development. Any questions, comments in the council? Very good, Christina, call the world.
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion carries. Item D3, we have a concept plan to a Woody Farm Development. I want briefly to be known of with the public council.
Sure. The owners of the property have come forward with a concept plan to develop what would be the south side of Meadowbrook Trail with four plexes, with the north side of Meadowbrook Trail being rezoned to GB, and then the existing Odie House would stay R1 for the time being. Paul Odie's here if you have any questions, but this would, Meadowbrook Trail would eventually get extended through to Heritage from Sandstone, something that we've talked about for at least a couple of times.
That road extension would be awesome. What kind of timetable are you guys looking at?
Paul Odie, we, tentatively would be a summer, a spring start date. I, we have to, you know, obviously, the concept plan and also the big, I guess, step for us is the rezone, so that's why we say tentative start plan, because the road won't start until any of, all the rezone is done, so.
I'm just kind of curious, are these going to be, are these going to be similar to the ones that are on Heritage now, or are they...
A little bit smaller, yeah.
Same kind of design?
Correct. They're very similar, but like, where those average 1300 to 1200 square foot, this is like 1,000 square foot to 1,100. So it's just a similar but different. A little bit smaller, so. Any other questions?
Very good. Any other questions?
Planning and zoning reviewed the concept plan at their last meeting. I don't believe there are any concerns other than probably the R1 zone on the Odie House itself. The plan with the R2 zoning south of Meadowbrook is a pretty traditional style of zoning, insulating the R1 or their single-family residential to the south from the general business on the north. So no, no action required by city council at this time. This is just for information. The next step would be the submission of a preliminary plan, and then we get into the DEPs and then final platting. Or the rezone.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Ollie, by the way, we move on to Administration D4, the Brandon Development Foundation, the closing out of the Corson Industrial Park Development Corporation. I understand there's some individuals from the Brandon Development Foundation, Dennis Olson or Chuck Parsons have a meeting to review this proposal with us.
Chuck Parsons is here.
Okay, he would like to address the council. That'll be the time.
I guess I would open it up to questions that you all would have regarding this.
I guess I might tell you, I'll just introduce the topic. The Corson Industrial Park is a voluntary work purposes title, and so the original investors and investors that whole organization is going to close out, they're going to pay back the money. Several of these companies are asking to keep their money in the Brandon Development Foundation and donate the money back that they will receive from this payout at the Corson Industrial Park. What the Development Foundation is asking is to utilize the city of Brandon as a flow through entity for the funds being donated back to the Brandon Development Foundation for tax donation purposes. At the time of the adjournment, it was approximately $426,000 that was, which actually going to be donated back to the Development Foundation. Is that still an act written or a chart?
That sounds right. I think it's a combination of cash, and then there's two parcels of land that have first-rate refusals that are going to be deeded to us. And of the original partners, there, there's two that are going to donate all of their proceeds back to us.
Would you like to recognize them? Will you name their names, Chuck?
Alliance Communications and First National Bank in Sioux Falls.
And then...
On behalf of the city of Brandon, I'd like to thank those companies. It's a fabulous gesture in their part to donate that money back to the Development Foundation. Just makes me so pleased to have those kind of corporate partners in our community.
I would agree, they're great partners.
Chuck, who, who else was involved with that initial process?
The Sioux Falls Development Foundation at the time, and then, at the time, it would have been Home Federal, which was then purchased by Security National, and then purchased by Great Western, and then Sioux Valley Electric.
And was Nikita, did Nikita put money for...
They did. They're choosing to keep theirs because they're going through some restructure on their own, so they really need to keep theirs for, for that.
Yeah. And I, I would echo what the mayor said. I mean, it was, when they put that whole thing together, it was quite an accomplishment for all those businesses to support us like that, and I appreciate those that are willing to leave the money inside the Development Foundation.
That really helps us out, so. We appreciate the city allowing, allowing the transaction to happen, so.
I remember when that happened, what a fabulous deal that you guys did there to get our corporate partners to step up and help out with the purchasing of that land. It was just a fabulous deal. Was the, I'm not sure in your timeline, Chuck, was it First Security Bank and then Home Federal, or was it Home Federal and then Security? I think it might have been Security then Home Federal, was it?
No, I think it was, it was Home Fed and Security, and then they got, you know, merged and bought out.
Right.
Okay.
Very good. So I would entertain a motion to close out the industrial park, and Corson Industrial Park, utilize the city of Brandon as a flow through for the funds being donated back to the Brandon Development Foundation. The city attorney has some legal language in the, in the board packet for the donation back to those entities that would be included in the motion that I would ask someone to make. I'll move.
Second.
Motion second to approve the closing out of the park and utilize the city of Brandon as a flow through for the funds being donated back. Any further questions?
This is Lisa Marson, just a comment, so the council understands, and so these business entities understand, because we have not had the conversation with them. We are not guaranteeing their tax, their, their tax benefit for this. It's something that we would allow if you pass the motion, and in terms of what language to the mayor was referencing, it would be that the donations that are actually made would be accepted by the city, put into the general funds, and then the city would transfer those funds then to the Brandon Development Foundation at a later date, so, thank you. Mayor, I think it should, I should, think it should be noted to, Dennis Olson was involved in that whole transaction, and that Development Foundation, like Tim's dad and George Golson, some of those real leaders in our community were really thinking ahead of their time.
Correct. Just based on the fact that due to my age, I put the number of all of those individuals, I didn't miss out on anybody, but you are absolutely correct, Mark. George Golson, Dennis Olson, big players, and then Gene Johnson, huge player in that whole, the late Gene Johnson. Thank you to all of those people that were involved with that. It just couldn't be more of a success story. I think I told it in an article from the Sioux Falls Business Journal, explaining how much of a success story that was, in the latest article, so hats off to Paul and both, but thank you. Christina, you call the world.
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion carries, thank you. Now just go out and get the World Bank developed sold out, Chuck.
We're trying.
Keep it up, keep up the good work. I'll give you a couple days. Next area, we have a payday, we, yeah, we have a payout number eight, a core area of Phase One project of Siouxup Construction for $313,215.97. We got a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Motion second to approve payout number eight, to Siouxup Construction. Any questions, comments? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion carries. Item number three is we have chandelier number three on the Holly Boulevard project in relation to first-rate excavator, two contractors on that project, first-rate H&amp;W. This is the chandelier number three with first-rate adding $99,252.75 to the total project cost. Majority of that being incurred with the inordinate amount of rainfall that we had and built a temporary road, asphalt road, to get us by on that project, so probably that going to be caused in our asphalt. It was just a project for Katie, the asphalt, and just glad they have that done, so it would be an addition of $99,252.75, and a motion to approve. Second. Motion second to approve chandelier number three. Any questions, comments? Very good, now Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion carries. Next, we have the payout number 11, and final payout at first-rate excavator on that project that we're referring to, item number three, a payout in the amount of $229,292.20. And motion to approve. Motion second to approve payout number 11. Any questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion carries, thank you. Next, I want to show we have a wage adjustment for Dale Curver to $27.19 an hour. You entertain a motion? Okay, second. Motion second to adjust Dale Curver wage to $27.19 an hour as presented. Any questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion carries. Item F2, we have the survey results of the water softening questionnaire that we put out, like we had 12, just under 1,200 responses to that survey, 33% return. We did, we had predictable, it might be a predictable response to that survey, 68% said no to the softening of the water path of plan. Brian, the other results in the survey were go A and Os.
Yeah, the, the two other primary questions were how many people had softeners in town? Almost 90% have softeners, and then an additional 27% have RO systems in their house. We included all of the comments off of Ask and Tell and the city's Facebook page, as well as any written comments. and Tell and the city's Facebook page, as well as any written comments that we received in the office on the, on the paper copy of the, of the survey, for everyone to review if you want to.
Very good. Any questions, comments from the council?
When will we be addressing that again?
Uh, fairly soon. Uh, we hope to review the options, the four options on the table at the December seventh meeting, uh, and we'd really like the council to make a decision on which option you would like to choose by the end of December. That way AA2S can finalize the facility plan and then get moving on the final design for the upgrade of the treatment plan.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, F3, as we have payout number fourteen on May 10, the Sioux project to H&amp;W Construction, seventy-two thousand, one hundred and one dollars and fifty-two cents. You entertain a motion approved.
Second.
Wish a second to approve payout number fourteen to H&amp;W Construction. Any questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament.
Thank you. Motion carries. And F4 is a request from the administration to advertise for bids on a phase two of the water meter replacement project. Another seven hundred meet, water meters that have a cost of two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. You entertain a motion to authorize the administration to advertise for bids on that project. Move to approve.
Second.
Wish a second to authorize the administration to advertise for bids on the phase two of the water meter replacement project. Any questions? Hearing none. Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament.
Hi.
Good. Motion carries. New business came from the council members, new business items? I did have one thing to, uh, I think, uh, bring up, just an informal, uh, topic for discussion. Apparently tonight, there's quite a few city councils across the state of the quarter that are reviewing mask mandates, uh, either tonight or tomorrow night. I think it's, uh, prudent for the City of Brandon to at least look at this topic and see if there's any discussion. Any council members have any comments or positions on the mask mandate ordinance? Just thought I'd bring it up for informal discussion. There's obviously nothing on the agenda to talk about, just, uh, looking to see if there's any questions, comments from the council, what's going on across the state. Had a meeting with the first-class mayor shoulders, I think there was three or four of them that were looking at, uh, ordinances either tonight or tomorrow. Mandating masks.
I am personally not in favor of a mandate, but I'm open for discussion. I have been following what Sioux Falls has been talking about, and, and there's great arguments on both sides, uh, of the case, um, and, and I think it's an evolving topic, but at the moment, I think I would rather see us, uh, provide education, uh, and resources over, over, uh, an ordinance that mandates it. I think it'd be very, very hard to enforce, and there's people that have justifiable reasons not to wear them. Uh, it's, it's tough to distinguish when those are.
Well, on that same line, Dan, I did talk to the administration today, and they are planning of ramping up their efforts for education purposes, I guess I'll call it, uh, advertising stuff. Had a couple suggestions for them, just getting the information out in the local newspaper, so on and so forth, mailers, that type of thing, so. We are gonna address, uh, ramping up our education efforts during that. Other councils, questions, comments? Or comments, I guess I should say?
Well, this, this is Jack, and, and, uh, I would be in favor of, of a, of a mandate, and though my reason being is that if we don't do something to slow this down, we'll be looking at closing businesses down, and nobody wants that. So i- if I'm, if I own a business, uh, I would want my employees and everybody coming in, into my business to wear a mask, so I do not have to shut down or reduce, um, the number of patrons. So I would be in favor of something like this.
I did see on the news that Huron is contemplating a resolution, not an ordinance, of something about enforcement.
Correct. There's a number of communities that are looking at it. Sioux Falls, Aberdeen, here on Watertown, I think are the ones that I'm aware of. Most of those, Sioux Falls rejected theirs last week. They're bringing it back around. I think it says resolution as well, uh, with some new language added to it about not enforcing it. I should've brought, I should've brought Watertown's, um, language. Uh, they're requiring masks, um, in businesses, open spaces and vehicles, if you can't socially distance from non-family members, and then they include in there some language that there are viable reasons not to wear a mask that they don't know about, so they're not going to enforce anything. Um, so I think most of the ones that are out there being debated this week, uh, require masks, but then they remove any, any enforcement aspect to it.
Uh, Brian, this is Vicki Davis.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question. Um, so I know, I think someone's watched the council, Sioux Falls, last week, some of the public input, and the one thing that stood out to me with all the medical, the health professionals, you know, basically, to me, oh, I was crying out for help, you know, there were a lot of overstaffed. Have you guys considered, uh, heard anything from our local two clinics, how they're doing? And I know, I mean, it's not your, my son at the hospital where they're twenty-four-seven, but, um, to kind of get a perspective, are they, they feeling the effects of Brandon, or?
We, we have not had any official discussions with Avera. Um, some anecdotal discussions I may have had. Um, they are, staff is frustrated, um, and, and, and they are definitely getting worn out. I know that they've been short-staffed, as some of their own staff have been sick and/or family members have been sick. Um, so there is, there is some frustration, and they are getting, they are getting worn out.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we've got that big construction thing, uh, you know, and coming into town. Can we use that for publicity? Can we say mask up and something like that on there?
Yeah, we, we started running ads again last week's journal. Uh, we'll, we'll plan on doing that probably every other week. We can certainly get the messages out on the message boards again. Uh, we took it, we took it off and put the water survey on, so we'll put some more mask up messages out there. We planned on continuing, um, the, the newspaper articles and the newspaper ads for the foreseeable future. Um, you know, they're projecting this is going to extend well into the spring now, depending on who you talk to. So that was our plan. We can certainly, uh, put some mailers in the, in the utility bills if, if we need to. So that type of stuff is pretty easy for us to, to handle.
I have a little bit of an issue with the idea of having an ordinance with no enforcement. Um, you know, one of the reasons they're talking about having, having an ordinance with no enforcement is not to put the pressure on the, uh, police department, uh, in those cases, but if you have an ordinance and then there's a violation, someone's gonna call in, and they're gonna ask the police department, "Why aren't you enforcing that?" And, uh, gonna, gonna create issues. I understand about the businesses, every business owner in town, anybody that has a, a business, can put up a sign and say, "Mandate masks." You know, rather than putting it back on the city, the businesses can do that. They can say, "Uh, we will not serve you if you don't have a mask." And every place that I go in Sioux Falls that has, has that mandate, I don't see anybody necessarily resisting it. Um, you know, i- if they put up a sign that says, "Encourage mask wearing," then you walk in, you see a lot of people not wearing them. Uh, but every business in town has that ability. It is their business, and they can, uh, they can do it. Having an ordinance without enforcement is just like making a recommendation, and, and I personally, I guess I don't like that idea.
So as city employees, are we wearing masks now?
We talked about it with, with department heads. Um, we're, we're starting to see more masks. What, what we've told them is, at this point, or what I've told them is, at this point in time, I don't necessarily want to make it mandatory. However, we are highly encouraging those folks, uh, when they're interacting with the public, whether it's going in to fix a meter, or if it's a police officer that's, that's stopping a vehicle or, or making a call, that we certainly wear our masks. Um, if we're in public gatherings, we should, we should be wearing those as well.
I think just from a leadership standpoint, we should be having our people do it, just to show others that they need to be doing it, too.
Uh, this is Vicki, uh, again, Brian, are you, what about if you guys are having meetings within hospitals where you can't be six feet apart? Are you bandying masks then, or having to wear them?
Yeah, we typically don't have too many of those. You know, for instance, last week at this, at the department meeting, which we usually have in the smaller conference room, we've moved it back out here to the council chambers, so that we can ensure that we have our spacing. We'll start wearing masks to those meetings as staff. And what about, like, outside meetings? People that come in here, contractors and such like, people like that? We haven't mandated it yet, but we could certainly put a sign up on city hall doors. I know the police department is insisting on masks. We can certainly do it at the city hall, that if you're coming in to conduct business, you need to be wearing a mask.
At a minimum, I think that sends the right message.
If you're quiet. You know, I worry more about if something happens to the administration, what happens to our city that if something, you know, do it, go down for a while?
Yep, and we, and we have had, we have had some recent cases in staff. Um, so we're handling those. So far, the department has been able to make those accommodations and get the, you know, continue to work without too much of an impact, but we are nervous. You know, as this continues to spread, staffing issues, um, are, are a major concern, that we're still able to provide services. You know, if, if we lose a third of our Public Works employees and there's a snowstorm, uh, you know, those streets are gonna take a while to get plowed. So we are taking a look at those. We are cognizant of the, of the issues, and we can certainly, um, like I said, if, if, if Public Works is out in their vehicle by themselves, I'm not sure that a mask is, is necessary, but if they're interacting with the public, they need to put one on, so.
That might be practical.
I would even say if there's, if, if there's two people in the, in one of the trucks together, they probably should have just-
Well, we've, one of the things we talked about Tuesday was one person per, per vehicle.
Okay.
So we'll probably catch some heat. From the public choir, there's only one person in the truck, but one person per vehicle.
Very good. Good discussion. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Uh, Paul?
Was looking for a little bit of discussion on the topics, which is very, very hot right now.
Mayor, this is Jack. I do have a, a comment or a question, maybe. So, um, are you, or are we, or can we, or should we request this to go on the agenda for the next meeting? Or how do we move this forward, so that it's, um, we take some, some official action or not?
If, uh, go ahead.
I just didn't know if there, we have some people that haven't really said-
We have some people that haven't really said where they weigh in on the topic. I mean, we've had questions and dialogue, but I just don't know if it's, and maybe it's worth going there, but we haven't really defined that.
As, as other cities take a look at this over the next week or so, um, we can, we'll certainly monitor those actions, and we'll probably get most of the drafts of those resol- I think most of the people are probably gonna do it by resolution now, 'cause an ordinance is gonna take too long to bring into effect. But we'll monitor those. We can certainly provide you with any updates, um, and, and we can certainly put it on the next agenda if, if there's interest.
You can certainly have a non-need for discussion. I mean, this change is daily, it's like, it's a movement.
I mean, just, just think back a week ago, where we were-
In some of the numbers, and it has gotten exponentially, uh, increased since then, so. I don't know, I think we just need to, uh, as a, as a council, as a city, step up, and, and we can, we can do more. Uh, I wish the business owners, Dave, like, I wish they were doing more, but they're not doing it. So some are, some aren't, and so I think we can do, do more. So I, I would like to see it on the agenda. Okay. We'll put it on the next agenda, and like I said, as those draft ordinances or resolutions come in, I can certainly ship them out to the, the council as we see them.
Very good. With that, I entertain a motion. We have two items in executive session of legal matter, contract, uh, matter. I entertain a motion to run executive session on six forty-five p.m. Second. Wish a second to enter into a second session of six forty-five for legal matter and contract matter.
Thank you so much. Clark?
Hi. Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament.
Motion carries. Thank you all.
Have we stopped the recording?